Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, May 24, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communications on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Next, we'll have our invocation and flag salute. Vice Chair Hadian will be leading us in the invocation, followed by the flag salute by Board Member Rosati. If you could please stand for the invocation.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and many blessings we have received. As this meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give us listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us presence of mind and an open heart. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which is one nation, one nation under the indivisible, indivisible God.
Thank you, Board Members. Madam Clerk, may I please have...
Yes. Board Member Otakunian?
Present.
Board Member Rosati?
I am here.
Board Member Gamboa?
Vice Chair Hadian?
Present.
Chair Lou?
I am present.
Please note, Board Member Gamboa is absent.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, Board Members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend tonight's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements from staff?
No announcements, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ramirez. Okay, for our hearing tonight, there is one public hearing on tonight's agenda, and it will be the hearing on project number 20-0005303 concerning a request for a conditional use permit or CUP and a single-family special development permit to allow the construction of a 4,153 square-foot single-family residence with a subterranean parking garage and basement space. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflicts of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
Yes, I've received many calls. I've received several emails about this project, and my thoughts will be shared tonight at this public meeting.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Mr. Ramirez, have our notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
There have been written communications as well as electronic ecomments, and both of those have been provided to the board.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce herself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Lou. I will now play the pre-recorded presentation for the board and the public.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Lou and members of the board. My name is Greg Mirzalhakian, Associate Planner and Project Planner. The project before you tonight is a conditional use permit and single-family special development permit to allow the construction of a new 4,153-square-foot single-family residence with a subterranean parking garage and a basement area at 630 South Parish Place. A CUP is required in order to alter the existing grade for the purpose of building a subterranean garage, which is a garage with a floor below the top of the curb at the front of the property. A single-family special development permit is required for any residence with a floor area of greater than 3,000 square feet. Absent the requirement for a CUP, a single-family special development permit would only be subject to the Community Development Director's approval unless appealed to the planning board. However, in the event that a single-family special development permit application is being processed in conjunction with another application that requires a decision by the planning board, the single-family special development permit application must be processed in conjunction with the other application and acted upon by the planning board concurrently with the other application. For this reason, both the CUP and the single-family special development permit are being considered at one time. The project site is located at 630 South Parish Place, half a block north from West Riverside Drive. The project site zoning is R1H, single-family horsekeeping, and the land use designation is low-density residential. The lot is 100 feet wide and 135 feet deep with 13,507 square feet. The surrounding area is characterized by similarly zoned R1H properties with single-family residences with lots of similar or smaller size. The 13,507-square-foot property is currently developed with an existing 3,239-square-foot single-family residence, detached garage and stables, and accessory dwelling unit, or ADU. The ADU was previously approved by the city pursuant to state law and is to remain. The ADU is not a part of this project. Per state law, ADUs are exempt from lot coverage and floor area calculations. The proposed residence has a slightly smaller overall footprint than the two structures it is replacing. The lot coverage of the proposed structure is significantly smaller because the existing structures have large roof overhang areas shown in crosshatch pattern, and the proposed residence does not have similar overhangs. If the project is approved, then the total floor area on the property will be approximately 4,721 square feet, which is below the maximum allowable floor area of 4,802 square feet on the lot. The total floor area includes the horizontal area within the exterior finished face walls of the first story of the proposed residence, as well as those portions of the covered front porch that are not open on two sides, and portions of the basement that are not exempt from floor area. Additional floor area and the amount of 295 square feet is calculated for the interior portion of the residence with a ceiling height greater than 12 feet as measured from the existing grade. At 31.74%, the project's proposed lot coverage is far below the maximum lot coverage of 50% on the property. The project's proposed height at the highest ridge for the residence is approximately 19 feet from grade, and that is lower than the 30-foot maximum height. In addition to the proposed residence, the applicant seeks to alter the landscaping and yard features pursuant to the requirements of the Burbank Municipal Code. Alterations to the front yard include the removal of the existing circular driveway to be replaced by a single driveway, and the addition of new walking paths and landscaping areas. The percentage of landscaping within the front yard will constitute less than the maximum 45% allowable by the Burbank Municipal Code. The rear yard will be completely redesigned to include an expanded swimming pool, trellis areas, and new landscaping areas. Except for 244 square feet, the 4,418-square-foot basement area is located entirely underneath the first floor and is therefore exempt from floor area calculations. The basement area contains a subterranean garage for six cars, as well as storage, utility, and bicycle shop areas. The basement has internal circulation to the floor above, to the rear yard area, and to the street. The CUP is required in order to alter the existing grade for the purpose of building a subterranean garage, which is a garage with a floor below the top of the curb at the front of the property. In terms of design, the proposed residence is a contemporary take on the American farmhouse architectural style. All windows will be single-hung aluminum-clad wood with divided lights, which is a common feature in the contemporary farmhouse architectural style. The materials used for the chimney body are a mixture of dark rustic iron finish and limestone veneer. The roofing is composed of metal panels with no offsets, and the walls of the residence are clad in a combination of thin brick veneer with painted finish, limestone veneer, and painted wood siding. The residence is not a Burbank characteristic residential architectural style. However, it is a singular style that has a consistent design character, roof lines, components, proportions, and details that are extended to all exterior portions of the structure referred to as 360-degree architecture in the City of Burbank Single Family Design Guidelines. Staff has analyzed the CUP request and has determined that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding residential uses in the area. Permit conditions have been placed upon the project to satisfy the required findings and standard city conditions, to mitigate the construction impacts of the project, and to protect the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the community. The project has been designed to comply with the city's neighborhood compatibility design guidelines, and conditions of approval numbers 1 through 91 have been incorporated into the project to ensure neighborhood compatibility and protection of public health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, staff recommends the approval of a resolution of the planning board of the City of Burbank approving a request for a condition use permit and a single-family special development permit to allow the construction of a 4,153-square-foot single-family residence with a subterranean parking garage and basement space. Project number 20-0005303, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of 10 minutes. Or sorry, yes, 10 minutes. Nobody... No, the applicant is not here?
Yes, I am. We're having technical difficulties. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm Charles Cusmano. Thank you for attention and consideration for my application for a CUP at 630 South Parish. I purchased the property with the intent of building a new home as my personal family residence. I have no interest in leasing it as a short-term rental, and Airbnb was a long-term rental. I have no interest in leasing it out the ADU. I have no interest in leasing out my home to a studio for filming. I will not run my business out of my home. Again, I'm building this home as my personal residence in a neighborhood that I grew up in to be closer to my family and my business. I've been an active member of the Burbank community all of my life, and my business has been located in Burbank since its inception. My family and myself have roots in the city of Burbank that go back to the 1940s, and our commitment to Burbank is second to none. Three of my four children now reside in the Burbank Rancho area. In fact, my oldest son lives only five houses away from the parish house. While I do not own horses, I love horses. I will do all I can to protect the sacred privilege established in this area. Even in the back of this property, there is room for stables if we take our trellis out. It has been my intent to build a classic farmhouse-style home that would fit the neighborhood. I chose a design, a single-story home, as to not tamper on my neighbor's privacy and would fit in with the size and scope of other homes on the street. Even though a two-story home would provide me with more yard space, we still elected to go with a single-story home. The total structure coverage on the site is being reduced from 4,905 feet to 4,717 feet, a reduction of 188 square feet, and the number of structures is being reduced from three structures to two structures on the site. Since this is a double lot with 100-foot width with a natural slope of about six feet from corner to corner, I chose to include a basement for parking with a semi-subterranean entrance, taking advantage of the natural slope. We will minimize the presence of the garage door by using an ornamental iron gate 10 feet wide versus a two-car garage door of 16 feet wide. The basement parking is a purpose for the CUP, which we believe will have no negative effect on the neighborhood and will only allow me to keep my cars off the street, allowing more street parking for my neighbors. We have worked diligently with staff to design a home that is in compliance with all design guidelines, and staff has recommended the CUP be approved. I ask you to approve the CUP as I look forward to moving expeditiously to becoming part of the Burbank Rancho community. Thank you for your consideration. Randy, do you have anything you want to add to their description?
Not at this time. I thought they did a very nice job summarizing the project.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did staff have any other further comments?
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant? Board Member Rosati?
I have a question for staff. So, question, if... The property is zoned R1H. If someone takes out their stables, do they lose their R1H designation?
Board Members, the R1H is the zoning designation for the property, so it does not matter what structures are on the property. Even a vacant lot in the zone would retain that zoning.
So, they can take out the stables and not lose the designation R1H, and if subsequently someone purchased the property down the line, they can add stables back to the property?
That is correct. In fact, the current property owner may do that if they so choose. Stables do not, or any horse facilities do not count towards floor area, so that would not factor into the maximum floor area on the property. Therefore, they could be added at any point.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I have a question. What is the minimum lot size in R1H zone?
Thank you for your question, Board Member Hadian. Let me pull that up. The minimum lot size in R1H or R1 properties is the same, and that would be 6,000 square feet if you were subdividing for a new property. However, any lots that exist are grandfathered in for whatever size that they may be at this time.
And the proposed project is sitting on a lot that is about 12,000? Or what is the lot size?
It's approximately 13,500 square feet. 13,506.7, I believe.
13,506.
13,506. Thank you. And we have... This is the second question. We have six parking spaces underground, but we also have other spaces like living space, and the total of basement comes to 4,417? I hope I'm saying it right. Is this the total basement, 4,417? 4,000. Well, in Exhibit D8, I see basement total 4,417.8.
D... Yes.
So, what is the difference? We have the basement square footage, and then we have the FAR total. Can you clarify that?
Absolutely. So, in the Burbank Municipal zoning code, the basement square footage is exempted from the floor area ratio or floor area total, so long as it is located entirely underneath existing floor area on the floor above it. So, if it goes beyond the footprint of the first floor, that portion of the basement, this is not exempted. In this case, you do have portions of the basement which count in the total floor area, which is why... One of the reasons why the floor area is higher than the square footage of the proposed house. There is a 244-square-foot portion of that basement, which is not exempted from the floor area total.
Thank you.
Chair, if I can. Chair Lou, just want to point out that I think we may have jumped ahead.
Yeah, I know. I was gonna go back.
If there's clarifying questions, the board can ask questions. I just want to make sure, because there's people listening and watching, that after... And don't take this any way. I'm saying you guys can ask clarifying questions. After we're done asking clarifying questions, we're gonna open it for public comment, and then after public comment, then you can deliberate. So, I just want to make sure. Someone in the audience might be listening going, hey, where's the opportunity for public comments? I just want to make sure, Chair, if that's okay with you, just to make that announcement.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Board Member Otakunian, did you have any question?
Thank you for asking, Chair Lou. No, I don't. I studied the project. It's a... No, I do not have questions as far as the project, because I think I'll participate in the deliberation.
Thank you. I do have a few questions for staff. On a property of this size, what would be the max number of horses that a person could keep on there?
Chair Lou, thank you for the question. I will get an answer for you momentarily.
Chair Lou, you can have one horse for over 3,000 square feet of lot area.
Okay, so four horses. And then tell me about that trellis area, because I couldn't see from... Because when I looked at the drawing, it didn't look like you could have stables, like, because you know, you need to have covered stable, covered stall or something for your horse. So, how large is that trellis area? And I mean, that could be for applicant or staff?
Thank you for the question. I will defer this question to the applicant. In the meantime, I can try to get some more information for you.
Are we on?
Yes.
Randy, you're on? We are. Hi. I'm the applicant's representative, and I can answer the question regarding the trellis being used as a stable. That was not the intent. It was if the trellis were removed, the northeastern portion of the site could easily accommodate a stable. It was not being proposed as a stable. It's merely a shade structure for the rear yard at this time.
Oh, yes, I understand that. I was just wondering, what are the dimensions of that area, so that we could actually... If someone took out the trellis, I just wanted to actually ascertain if someone could feasibly put in covered stables. I mean, I know they probably will not be able to do it for four horses, for sure, but what's the ability based on like the current zoning?
The dimensions of the columns, outside face the column, it is 16 feet square. This whole area. I'm sorry, I thought they were talking about... Were you talking about the entire area of the yard where the trellis is located, or were you talking?
That's correct.
Okay. Hold on.
And if it'll take you some time, we can go to public comment first, and then you can provide me the...
29 by 28.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Lou, I did a rough calculation of the entire area beyond the proposed trellis structure, where there is a possibility if a horse facility were to go in, and that area behind the swimming pool is approximately 1,700 square feet, potentially, if you were to remove some of the proposed landscaping features in that area.
Okay. And then, I don't recall... There aren't any setbacks, correct, for stalls and turnout areas?
I'm not aware that there are required setbacks. What I could tell you about horse facilities is that they don't count towards floor area, and there's plenty of room. For accessory structures in general, which many horse facilities may qualify for, the minimum required setback in the rear third of the lot would be three feet to the property line. So, I don't anticipate that would be an issue.
Just to clarify, for non-commercial stables, you have to be set back three feet from the side of your property lines.
Okay.
And Chair, I believe, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if you're gonna have an opening along a property line, then there's a certain distance, minimum distance you have to be from that property line for an opening for that horse stable.
Yeah, the opening itself needs to be 10 feet away from the last 35 feet of the lot in the R1H.
And to clarify, that would mean that right now, the house, I believe, is set back at 10 feet, so that'll give you a point of reference as to where the opening would have to be for that horse stable, if you projected that towards the rear yard of the property.
Thank you. Sorry, I have a parking dog. Okay. Okay, but there would be room, because it's set back pretty... It would be set back pretty far enough that from the main house, that we would have that opening, not interfere with anything.
There is the ability to accommodate access to the front of the house, to the back, if there was a stable at the rear corner there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Board Members before I go to public comment? Okay. So, we're not gonna open public comment to hear from any persons who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. So, if you would like to provide a public comment, please call 818-238-3335. Again, that's 818-238-3335, and the phone lines are now open, so please bear with us, because it sometimes will take a few minutes for the first calls to come through. And the phone lines are now open, so please bear with us, because it sometimes will take a few minutes for the first calls to come through.
We do have one caller in the queue. They're just getting through.
Thank you.
Jean, you're on live with the planning board.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Jean Schandberger. My husband and I are Rancho homeowners and horse people. You have an email from me and probably an e-comment indicating our opposition to granting both the conditional use permit and the single-family special development permit. So I just want to comment on a couple of other matters that have come up. I appreciate the representatives of the project applicant talking about this project applicant's plans to occupy this residence and not to lease it as a single or short-term rental or long-term rental or Airbnb, or to lease out the ADU. However, the, once these are granted, they're irrevocable, and these permits and grants run with the land, not the owner. So if anything should change at any, the next owner might not see it that way. And that is not good for our neighborhood. Chair Lou, I appreciate your questions on the back area and potential restoration to stables at some point. I didn't quite hear exactly what the total square footage was available, but just wanted to clarify on, on exactly how much would be available in the space if a lot of things were removed. Finally, the presentation from staff indicated, and I understand that this is outside of the proceedings, but it's applicable in the larger context, that the grandfathered ADU for which the separate permit has been issued as of right is a thousand and eighteen square feet, which was different than the five hundred and sixty-four square feet indicated on the project plans for the cabana. So just in the overall context, that is as large as many homes in Burbank, including the Rancho. So just seems like a whole lot of square footage. You've heard our views already on, on suitability for the neighborhood, and thank you very much for your consideration. Again, we are opposed to both the conditional use permit and the special development permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this moment, we have no other callers in the queue.
Okay, thank you. There being no further public comments, I now declare the public comment closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
Chair Lou, yes, I actually can address the caller's question about the square footage that would be available. If you just give me a second, I can actually share my screen where I've done a rough calculation. I think that might be helpful. One moment, please. I'm almost ready. I don't know if you're able to see my, the plans in front of you.
Yes, we can.
So we already discussed the required setback on the side here at about, at three feet for accessory structures. If the trellis area were removed, potentially seven hundred fifty-five square feet would be available in, in that portion of the rear yard, and an additional seven hundred and forty-two square feet would be available in, in the portion with the deck area. So that would be a total of approximately fifteen hundred square feet, give or take.
Thank you for that. Sorry, what is the, the line that runs along the back and then comes in? Not that one, but the.
This line?
No, go down. It looks like a wall, but I don't think it's a wall.
This line?
So if you go back up?
Greg, I think it's a planter wall, the, at the back of the, where the back of the trellis.
Oh, this one?
Oh, yeah, that's planter wall. Okay, it's a planter wall. Okay, got it.
The, the question, Greg, I think, that was asked as far as the ADU and the size of it, can you show that on the screen just and clarify how all the square footage is allowed to occur based on direction we received when we did our last update to the ADU regulations from the State Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Fred. So that is correct. We, we did confirm with the state that square footage of an ADU, when it's being converted from an existing accessory structure, can be in excess of what's allowed for a new ADU. So which, this particular ADU has a, is a, is a two-level structure, and, and there's a basement room and a, at-grade portion as well. And together, those portions combine to one thousand and eighteen square feet. So per, per state law, one is allowed to convert existing accessory structures. In this case, the accessory structure was a guest dwelling unit, a guest dwelling with, at the time, you know, you would not be allowed to rent it. Once it's been converted, technically you can. But we do not have any indication that that is the, the plan for, for this property.
And Chair Lou, just to clarify, because I know you're probably thinking, looking at the zoning regs, we, we put specific kind of provisions as far as sizes based on the number of bedrooms. So one thing that was clarified to us by the state was that if you have an existing structure and that square footage even exceeded our numbers, we, we can't like, you know, cut off or bifurcate a portion of the ADU. It has to be allowed to be converted as, in whole. So even though it's eighteen square feet beyond our thousand square foot number that you're probably familiar with, it, per state law, we, we have to allow the full conversion of the, of the footprint that exists.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other comments from community development department? Okay.
Not this time.
Does the applicant or the representative wish to make any further comments?
No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board for applicant or staff? Okay, so now I declare the hearing closed, and the planning board went.
Maybe can I make one comment, please?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I've been able to speak to four of the five neighbors whose properties touched my property. I went door to door, and all four that I spoke to were very supportive of the project. They all liked that it was only one story, and I had no negative feedback. The one other person I did not speak to, I just knocked on the door a couple times and never answered the door. So I think I got good support from, you know, all of, all the neighbors who actually touched, touched the property.
Thank you. Actually, thank you for bringing that up. That reminds me, there was a public comment or an email, I don't remember if it's an e-comment or the, the emails, where I believe your neighbor was asking about the water table issue that, because you're, of the subterranean garage, that it might somehow affect water flowing into or out from his property. So I don't know if staff has an answer to that.
Chair Lou, I, I actually have confirmed with our building division staff that anytime you dig beyond five feet, you actually need to submit a soils report, a geotechnical soils report. So this project would trigger that. If the soils report finds that there are issues with water seepage, they would need to provide the study to, to show how the, the, how the dirt will be shored up for during the construction of the walls. So there's no, there's no issue with water seeping in. So it would be required upon building permits submitted if the project is approved. And that will be submitted together with the building plan check process.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, if there's no other questions, then I'm going to declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Yes, Vice Chair Hadien.
Thank you very much to staff for the presentation. I looked at the drawings and all the information, and you know, I always go through all details. And I also read the comments. I noticed that most of the comments talk about three features, three things about this project. Inappropriate, too big, has ADU. But when you, these are the three things that stand out bold with this project. But also, there is a very good comment, a comment from, I'm going to tell you right now. It's from, I believe it's from Alisa Cunningham, that what can be built by code must be allowed. They have followed everything that actually the development standards allows for them to build. They are below the maximum allowed lot coverage. This project is below the maximum allowed FAR. They are proposing nineteen feet maximum height versus thirty feet, which is allowed, and nineteen feet is much less than thirty. Their, the project has sixteen proposed trees versus the two minimum that they could just present. And I think one thing about this project is the underground parking space, and it's only the two hundred ninety-five square foot of the basement that triggers the conditional use permit. I think that there should be a waiver or flexibility in the new single-family projects to allow for building new projects and waiving this small amount of basement, which compared to the proposed building size is nothing. We, we know that more than fifty percent of Burbank's single-family residences are aged more than seventy years old. They're built before nineteen fifty. And we always talk about wanting new city, renewing the texture. And when a project like this comes up, we have so many oppositions. I can support the project, and I have no opposition to any part of it.
Thank you. Board member, Akhiri Kenyon or Azadi?
I'll go, I'll go. As, as my colleague, Ms. Hadien, Vice Chair, stated, the project meets the requirements, that's part of the code. And what I'd like to say is, a project of this size is going to cost the homeowner quite a bit, and I think it's gonna add value to the entire neighborhood. And based on the fact that he's keeping his project to the minimum, actually, instead of maximizing everything, I, I think he's, he's serving the neighbors well. I read some of the comments that I, that were sent in. One comment struck me, talked about mansionization. And, and I wasn't sure how that would apply here with the structure that's only nineteen feet high, and it's spread over thirteen thousand square feet of land. And, and the square footage, the parking is even underneath. There's not even parking as to, you know, on, on the lot itself. I think the owner is, is, is true to his word where he said he loves horses, but I think the horses that he loves are more like the horsepower that the cars carry. That's why it's got so many parking spaces. So I, I, and, 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 you know, that's, that's love of horses, one way or the other. So, and as far as the concerns that the, you know, somehow the entire area is going to lose its right to maintain horses. And that, that proved to be perhaps misinformation, that no one loses their right to maintain horses of, that live in the Rancho, that the zoning is RH one designated. So in, in that regard, I think it beautifies the area. It's a good project. The only, I guess, the concern was about the ADU, and I think that's clarified. And I think the viewers and people who participated, now I understand that you don't technically take that down. And I also believe that the property owner is not, the applicant's not going to engage in any type of leasing and so forth and so on. He did mention he has four children, and who knows, perhaps many grandchildren, and he could use the space. So in that regard, I'm able to support the project wholeheartedly, because it's within the guidelines. It beautifies the neighborhood, upgrades the lot itself, and I think it, it will serve the neighbors and the neighborhood well.
Thank you, Board Member Akhiri Kenyon. Board Member Azadi?
Thank you, Chair. You know, lots of, lots of friends and neighbors have contacted me about this property, and a lot of misinformation. As you know, nobody has stand more firm against ADUs, Airbnbs, and transitional, transitional homes than me. But I think it's important to be fair and factual, fair to the community and fair to the applicant. You know, I've been in this subject house several times, and, and yes, it is a great old house, but it's in need of costly, costly repair. And this house has been in the market four separate times over the years, and nobody thought it was so special to preserve, except for the applicant, who obviously has a different vision than, than anyone else. But the fact that it's been on the property, been on the market four times, and no one wanted it for horse property, or no one wanted it for preservation, kind of speaks for itself. We still have property, private property rights, and if someone wants to spend two million dollars on a house and, and knock it down, I, I think that they have that right. I think the most important thing we gotta remember is the designation, R one H. If someone wants to take out the stables, fine. But the good news is, the next owner may want the stables put back in, and they can do that. Regarding the size, there was a lot of online stuff and information about the size. It's the largest home ever, biggest FAR ever. Well, let's look at the facts. Six thirty South Mariposa, forty-eight thirty-one square feet on a twelve thousand three seventy-one square foot lot, which is point four oh. on a twelve thousand, three seventy-one square foot lot, which is point four oh. Our subject house is point three one. Property two, eighteen eighteen West Riverside. Four thousand, five hundred and forty-four square feet on a seven thousand, four seventy-two square foot lot. This house is literally just down the street at point six zero, almost double, double than this house. One, three, 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 West Valley Heart. Four thousand, thirty-five square feet on an eighty-nine hundred square foot lot at point four five. Our subject property is point three one. So again, when we're talking about overbuilding, this, this house doesn't have the mass, the bulk of any of the other houses. Matter of fact, this house has less mass, less bulk, less density on the lot than the house that's currently there. Concerns about the Airbnb and the ADU. Nobody that I know that has, that spends three point five million dollars on a house is going to have a stranger living in their backyard. And I understand that the house could turn over and potentially somebody else could buy it. And if somebody else buys this house and the market appreciates the four or four point five million dollars, I don't think logically that person is going to rent their house, the, the ADU to someone that they don't know. So I, I'm just looking at it logically. Could this be an Airbnb? If you do the, the math, at twenty-five percent down and sixteen grand a month, I don't think it pencils. So again, everyone knows I am against Airbnb. I'm against ADUs, but I'm not going to penalize the applicant because first of all, Airbnb is not legal in Burbank right now, so that's not my concern. That's a fight for another day. And the ADU unfortunately is legal. But logically, I don't see someone that has, spending this kind of money is going to want a stranger living in their backyard. Am I worried about a precedent with underground parking? Well, I've been on this board eight years and this is only the second request. And why? Because it's cost prohibitive. Most people don't have the money to spend on underground parking. So I don't think that's going to set a precedent. I don't think we're going to see a whole lot of requests for underground parking because of this project. And then I saw a lot of questions and concerns about subterranean parking. Just drive around, folks. There are so many subterranean parking apartments and condos. And, and, and obviously we haven't had them sink or fall or crash or water problems. It, it's not something that's new. So at the end of the day, the house is a single story house. It could have been a two-story house. They could have put a twelve hundred eighty, eight, square foot ADU on. They didn't. The roof height is less than what they proposed. It's, it's far below our point three five. What happens with the, the garage below and the basement doesn't affect the size, mass or bulk of the house. I don't think it's going to negatively affect the neighborhood. And I don't think having a three point five million dollar home in your neighborhood is, is necessarily a bad thing. There are ninety-one conditions of approval. I read them all. They're, they're all taking all the concerns in, into, into place. And I could certainly make the findings for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. So I actually live in the Rancho area, but on the other side. So this project was very, it was very frustrating for me. I, I understand that applicants and, and finding of the, the great report that staff did, the recommendation, I, and I understand my colleagues and, and agree that, that based on, based on the current code, this project can move forward. It's frustrating because, because you know, I, I spent several years looking for horse property in the, in the Rancho area and was very difficult to find because a lot of folks have put in pools, my neighbors in fact. And they say the same thing, I love the Rancho, I love the horses. And then they buy property and they stick a pool in the back. So it may get hard for anyone after to have horses again. I'm a little encouraged with this project that there is an ability for someone to put the stables back in. Albeit, it'll be right next to the pool, who's going to, might be sipping from your pool. But it's possible. I think anyone who was, who's buying a property like that will have the funds to, to put, to put stalls back in if they want to and make that ADU into the tack room. But I think for me, I would have felt much better if they had just like maintained stables. And I think that just on the principle of, you know, you're, you're coming to, to the Rancho area and then you take out the, you take out the stables. It just seems very contrary to me. And I think, you know, I will push more toward a change in the code so that if you're taking out stables, you have to put them back in, you know, like, and if you're putting in a pool, there has to be room for, for stables where it's not cost prohibitive for the next owner to, to try to put the stables back in. So I am a, a no on this, on this project. Yes, Board Member Rosati.
I can make a motion if you'd like to hear one.
Yes, please go ahead.
To approve project number two, zero, 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 five, three, zero, three, request for a conditional use permit and single family special development permit for a forty-one fifty-three square foot, single family residence with a subterranean parking garage and basement space at six hundred, at six thirty South Parish Place.
Second.
Board Member Hadian, seconds. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
Chair Lou?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. Now's the time for reports from city staff. Any reports, Mr. Ramirez?
Chair, we don't have any reports for tonight.
Thank you. So now we have oral communications from the public on matters that concern city business. So comments are limited to three minutes. And if you want to participate, please call eight one eight, two, three, eight, three, 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 five. And go ahead and bear with us on the phone lines because it might take a few minutes for the first callers to get through.
Chair, we're just checking to see if there's anybody on the call. About another half minute.
Thank you.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. Okay, so our next item is approval of the minutes from May third, twenty twenty-one. Do I have any questions or a motion?
I can move it if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you, Board Member Rosati. A second. Vice Chair Hadian, is that, I saw your hand?
No, I, I was absent, so I just wanted to say.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'll second. Can we go ahead and have the?
Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Lou, just to clarify, it's approval of the May tenth minutes.
Oh, sorry, it's May third on my script. Okay, May tenth minutes. Can, so can Board Member Rosati, are you okay with making that change?
Yes, ma'am. I can move that.
Okay. And I second.
Okay. Board Member Hadian?
Yes, for the May ten minutes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Hadian? Absent. Chair Lou?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. So next item is the introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Do you members of board have any items to introduce? Yes, Board Member Rosati.
I don't have any items to introduce. I just want to make a couple of comments. I noticed that on some of the communication that we're getting from the public, we are now blacking out people's names. I understand blacking out people's email addresses, but I'm just curious as to why all of a sudden we're blocking out names. I think that if you're going to, if you're going to write in and make a comment, you should stand by, you just stand by your comments and, and we don't know where these comments are coming from. If they're coming from people in Burbank or friends of people from Illinois or, it's a change that I noticed and I just didn't, didn't understand it.
Board Member Rosati and, and the board as a whole, I apologize. It's, I should have caught that earlier. I don't think it was done with any malice. It was just, you know, new staff is undertaking these reports and it's one thing we missed. But you're right, we typically just black out the email and we should have left the names on there. But it wasn't intended to, you know, lessen anybody's comments. But that, that was an error on my part and I should have caught it earlier.
Okay, just, just asking.
Yeah, it, it won't, we will not be doing that for future ones. Apologize.
And then my second comment is, I noticed that on the agenda, we have a very large scale project, some dome thing. And I would, I, you know, I, I made the comment in the past that on something this size and scope, I, I would really like us to job walk that. Schedule a time where all of us can, can look at this project and talk with the developer because it's significant.
We can accommodate that. We might, depending on people's time, because it's kind of hard to get everybody. So what we might suggest is maybe what we'll have is, we'll coordinate with everybody and if we can have it maybe like two, two members at a time and maybe take one. But it'll all be with the same people, architects, developers. We'll schedule something with you just because I know getting everybody together and then coordinating that might be a little problematic, but we will do that.
Well, if you offered lunch, I bet you it'd happen.
Yeah.
I'll buy lunch. I'll buy lunch.
We, we will, we will accommodate the request and, and work with you all and coordinate with your schedule and the clerks so that we can have a walkthrough. We might have it, you know, one right after the other, but we'll do that.
Very good.
I like to be on the one that Mr. Rosati is on, so he's buying lunch.
Yeah, I know what you're ordering. Steak and lobster.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Okay. City planner comments?
Just one. And it's, I, I guess I'm, I'm saying this with a little bit of, you know, a little bit of sadness on my end is not too sure if the rest of the board is aware. We haven't told you, but today is Board Member Hadian's, Vice Chair Hadian's last day. She's stepping down from the board. She let us know last week and I, I gave her my thank yous personally via email, but I wanted to also say them here for the board and also for the public to be well aware that we really think, want to thank you personally, staff, for all your commitment, your preparation and your thoroughness and analyzing the projects. And also, as you noted, even when we disagreed, you were always very respectful. And, and that is more than, more than the staff can really hope for. You were not only, you know, it was a partnership, I think, between the board and you really presented yourself in a way that I think you'd be quite proud. And it was really helpful. We learned a lot from you. I think you set a very high benchmark for what a, for what a very good board member and vice chair and has been. And I think you, were you a chair as well too, right, at some point? Or we didn't get that far.
Chair and waiting.
Chair and waiting, yeah. So I, I think, and, and to specifically with projects, you were on the board and you provided very helpful insight. You made the projects better. Two large projects that, you know, I wanted to commend you for all your detail and input were the Avion project, which is huge, is transformative project, and seven, seven, front, seven, 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 Front Street, where you provided all the input. And I think those two are indicative just of bringing your individual skillset as an architect. But then also just the thoroughness. I mean, you really made us, I tell people, I said, one thing we can be assured of, I would tell the staff, one thing we should be assured of is Board Member Hadian's going to read her full agenda pack and she's going to have questions. So you kept us on our toes, but in a positive way. So I just wanted to personally thank you and also, you know, want to commend you for the time and the commitment that you made. But then also just the very fact of personally why you're stepping down. I also want to commend you for that too because, you know, that's, that's something to be said. I think family is always important and I, and I, and I appreciate that. So from staff to you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone. I also would like to thank planning board, not just planning board, community development members. But I remember disagreement moments, good moments and humor moments. Mr. Hadian knows what I'm talking about, about what project. So it was a great experience. But there are three persons that I really want to appreciate by naming them one by one. Natalie, Griselda and Javier. You all have a lot of work to do for each planning hearing and I truly appreciate your work. And I'm really thankful that I had this opportunity. Mr. Rosati, I learned a lot from you. I like the disagreement moments. And you speak your mind, which is very much appreciated. And Chair Lou, not, you will not miss anything. I like clarification on the legal aspect of that disagreement that we had for one of the motions. And also Board Member Hadian, thank you so much for voting for me, electing me. I learned from you, especially on the real estate law. And thank, thank you all again. Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Rosati.
You know, Board Member Hadian and I had a brief conversation before the, before the meeting. And taking care of one's parents who are aging in place is one of the most single important things that we can do for our family. And I just want to say, I admire it. I admire it.
Thank you.
And I really, I admire it a lot and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Board Member Articunian?
Bittersweet, I guess, is how I can characterize this moment. It's I was astounded by the level of knowledge that you brought to the table. Because I don't think this board has seen this type of knowledge in terms of having an architect on the board and basically dissecting a project. Like, like, you know, high, high school kids, like they dissect a frog, you know, taking apart every little piece and, and then studying it. So that was very refreshing. At times I was challenged because I, some of the things that you mentioned, I didn't understand, but I tried to follow it as best I could when it got into the nitty gritty. I have to admit that. But I think your, your knowledge and expertise and, and the, the angle, the, the different angle that you brought of looking at projects was very, very helpful. I, I can't say enough about it. It, it, in fact, I think it made my job easier, if you call this a job, even though we don't get paid for it. But anyway, see Mr. Ramirez laughing. So I'm sad, I'm very sad to see you go, not only because you're a great planning board member, but you're also a good friend. So I'm, I'm really sad to see you go. But at the same time, I'm, I wish you the best in whatever's ahead. And may God put his hand on everything that you do and, and guide you through it. So, and I don't know, it's going to be a void. I can assure you that. It's going to be big shoes to fill. Whoever's going to come in and sit on that chair, in that chair after you. Best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Board Member Articunian. I have the same level of respect for you professionally. And as I said, I learned a lot from every board member, chair, vice chair here. Other than appreciating the community development members and Mr. Ramirez, Mr. McMillan and is Scott here? He's not here. Yes, so I'm, there, there are two women that I want to name that had great impact on me and were inspiring. One is Emily Gableadi, our former mayor and council member and also Sharon Springer. By watching them on the city council and listening to them, I wanted to follow what they actually were doing. So they, they had great impact on me. And it's good to try to, to try to dedicate a little bit of our time and set good role model examples for the next generation to come. That's all. Thank you.
So Vice Chair Hadian, I, I again, I want to echo my colleagues and thank you for your amazing work. You, like they said, you totally raised the bar in terms of the knowledge, the prep, the, I mean, I used to kind of try to hide my smile when like, like staff would scramble for trying to answer your questions. Like a test, you know? But, but yeah, you would, you would come at it at these angles. I was like, wow, I, like, I was, I have so much respect for you and for what you brought to the board and just you as a leader and, and and I appreciate that, you know, you're stepping down only because of family issues and to support your family. And that's important, definitely family first. But I know this is not goodbye for us because we're going to have a meal and we're going to hang out, so looking forward to that. But thank you again for all of your service.
Thank you. I just want to mention one thing. If I, if I read through everything, all the details of the project was for a few reasons. One, for the applicant, because they do a lot of work. By the time they get here to the planning board, they have done extensive work from the design, from the applications, from meeting this council members, neighborhood, all that. So I, I wanted them to know that somebody actually read through line by line of everything that they have provided and they filed with the city. Another thing is that there is a mindset associated, I hear that with the public or in general, that all the board members or city council, they, they don't look at that. They don't even read the binder. We do. And I wanted to let them know that we actually read through everything. We go see each and every property before the hearing. And that, that's why we, we join the planning board. It's not just you sign up and you come sit here and do nothing. So for the future applicants, it takes a lot of work. Do your homework, do your best. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hadian. Mr. Ramirez, do you have any other comments?
No, after, after that, that's, that's a good way to close. So I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone. We are journeying to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, June 14, 2021 at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following two ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, www.burbankca.gov/ecomments or by calling in directly to the planning board meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you all for your participation and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.